We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're a couple of minutes after. The school board of the Duval County School District is now convened in its regular workshop meeting. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID-19 community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. At this time, actually, this is one of our meetings where we get to do some really fun stuff. We're gonna start with one of our partner spotlights. We have the Cathedral Arts Project here. And to do the intro, I'm gonna ask Ms. Renfro real quickly, and then she'll bring up our guests.
So this is a real treat for me. As a principal, Cathedral Arts was providing programming for about two years. And I was the principal of school number eight. Jay Allen Exum on this morning had the, our children were privileged enough to have the services of Cathedral Arts Project. And that has been long withstanding for many years. And thrilled to be able to share the great things that Cathedral Arts continues to do through any given child and their additional initiatives in integrated arts. So we give it to Dr. Lee.
Good morning. Come on up.
Good morning.
And as a reminder to all of us, we'll have them do their presentation, then we'll have some time to ask some quick questions and such.
Awesome. Well, I'm Kimberly Hyatt. I've served as president and CEO for the past 20 years and really appreciate this opportunity to share more about CAP with you. I understand there may be some questions, so I brought reinforcements with my team. Two of my VPs, Louisa and Melanie, who I've realized all of you seem to know. And also Meredith, who is our visual arts teaching artist fellow. And she'll be speaking near the end of the presentation to give you a firsthand look. But before I start, I do want to thank you for making our trio feel so special. At your last board meeting, they just returned from playing in Carnegie Ball and represented Team Duval very well. So thank you for that. So CAP began 30 years ago in 1993. A small group of parishioners at St. John's Episcopal Cathedral brought 10 students over from a transitional housing facility for dance lessons. And there was never really a plan to go into the schools, but pretty soon principals started calling the cathedral to ask if CAP could go to the school and provide some sorts of arts instruction. And as Paula mentioned, I think Paula might have been the very first principal to call when she was at Masson.
That couldn't happen.
And so we started going to more and more schools. And then what began as really a single dance class for 10 children has now served over 31,000 children with ongoing arts education. CAP is nationally recognized around the country for the quality of our work. We've received numerous accolades. And in fact, we've been recognized as one of the top arts and humanities programs for youth in the country by the President's Committee on the Arts and Humanities. So I'm really proud of that. At CAP, our mission is threefold: to empower every child's creative spirit, elevate arts educators in their field, and advocate for access and equity in arts education. Our work really falls into two buckets: advocacy and direct services. With regard to advocacy, in 2013, CAP reached out to the Kennedy Center and DCPS was selected as the 14th any given child site in the nation. And today, we, there are 28 sites, and Jacksonville and DCPS are recognized as among the very best of all of those. We recently presented at two national conferences. We were pleased to provide a video address from Dr. Green. And we had lots of attendees coming up to us afterwards saying how lucky we were and how much they wish they had a district that supported the arts like DCPS does. So we're so grateful for this partnership as we work for our vision for Northeast Florida to really lead the nation when it comes to providing arts education. And as I detailed recently when I was on First Coast Connect with Melissa Ross, we recognize that DCPS has come a long way in recent years with regard to what you do for the arts, and we're really appreciative of that. And then with direct services, CAP provides rigorous standard spaced instruction in all five arts disciplines to underserved children primarily at Title I schools. We do this at no cost to students and their families, and we do this during after-school, school day, and also during the summer. What most people think of when they think of CAP are our after-school programs. This year, we're providing 40 programs. And a student in our program receives two afternoons of instruction per week all throughout the school year. And performance and exhibition opportunities are a critical part of the learning process. And so students in our visual arts program have the opportunity to have their work installed at the Alexander Perez Gallery at JU. And then our performing arts students take the stage each spring at the Performing Arts Showcase, and that will be at the Ritz Theater the last weekend in March, if you're interested in coming. And really, there are so many benefits of sequential arts education when it comes to empowering children to achieve their full potential. And these align with our shared emphasis on the whole child. So countless studies reinforce what we see day after day, which is that students who are involved in the arts consistently improve their academic performance, including performance on standardized tests. They also learn to think innovatively and persist in problem solving, which are critical skills for workforce readiness. And in addition, the role of the arts for children's mental health cannot be overstated. I recently heard Dr. Green identify mental health as one of the top three challenges facing the district. And so that's why it's really more important than ever that kids be equipped to utilize the arts as a means of self-expression and perseverance. The fact is that young people often feel safer expressing traumatic experiences and uncomfortable feelings through the arts than they do through traditional therapies. So it's not a magic fix, but when kids get to experience the arts, it changes their experience of life in school. So when they see that they can create anything, whether that's a monologue, or a musical performance, or a dance, or a piece of art, it increases their self-efficacy, and that carries through so many aspects of their life. And you can see from these quotes how important the arts are to these kids. When kids aren't sure of what they are feeling, the arts can really provide a vehicle for them to explore, process, and express a range of emotions. What we often say at CAP is that the arts help kids to find their voice and to use it for good. And critically, participating in the arts can create a sense of belonging for kids who feel they don't fit in anywhere else. And in addition to sequential arts education during the after-school hours, we also offer arts integration during the school day. This is a program we plan to ramp up in the coming years because we've been so impressed by the early results. As you can see, we now operate at least one arts integration program in each of the board districts. And we are able to do that because of Esther funding that you've provided us this year. So thank you for that. In arts integration, students connect an art form with another subject area, and they learn the academic standard through the art form. So you can think of it as connecting the dots, applying knowledge from one subject to another subject, and discovering solutions. Because to persist in problem solving, no matter what that subject is, kids have to be self-motivated and engaged. And there is nothing that engages kids' brains like the arts do. And so that's why we see these impressive results that we do. To be clear, as Paula will say, arts integration is not easy. It has to be done right. Teachers need training. They need support from principals. And the greatest academic improvement comes when kids can participate in arts integration over successive years. That said, we've already started seeing impressive results. And actually, some years ago, when Paula was principal at Johnny Ford, we offered an arts integration program where we paired civics with theater. And we did that for two years. Both years, 100% of the students in the arts integration program scored proficient on their end-of-course exams, whereas the control groups, the percentages were 46% and 78%. So that's just an example of the difference that arts integration can make. To give you another example, last year, CAP divided an arts integration program for third graders using theater with English language arts. Students who were exposed to arts integration in their reading class ended the year with an average Lexile score of 339, while those who were not exposed to arts integration ended the year with a score of 214. So that's a 58% increase, and as I understand it, that's a full year higher when it comes to Lexile. So you can see that arts integration gave these students a significant boost in getting on track to be reading at grade level. And it's really important to understand that these results were based on only a half year of arts integration programming. So this year, we're not only offering more arts integration programs, we're offering them for the full year. And so we're really excited to look at the data this summer, and we'll certainly want to share that with all of you once we analyze it. But our goal in expanding arts integration is to help the district become a district because we just see that's the power of this work. So at this time, Meredith, who is our visual arts fellow, is going to share a little bit about her arts integration programs. And she's visual arts, so she is paired with science.
Thanks, Kimberly. Good morning.
Good morning.
I was hired in August to begin this school year as the Cathedral Arts Project's Petway Teaching Artist Fellow in Visual Arts. I currently teach at five locations to 11 groups, totaling close to 250 students who range in age from 5 to 15, kindergarten to eighth grade. A large part of my teaching load this year is our in-school arts integration, as Kimberly mentioned, with third, fourth, and fifth grade science classes at three different DCPS elementary schools. I visit one school a day on three days of the week, and I take my art supplies with me into their science classrooms. The teachers communicate with me, ideally during the early part of the week, and tell me what students, or what standards, sorry, the students are working on that week. And then I design an art project that supports the same concepts and helps to scaffold their learning. I envision links between the science standard and the art project through the choice of materials, methods, and mindsets. To give you a few examples, sometimes the lessons I design are a more direct interpretation of the science lesson, such as what you're seeing here, a recent fourth grade class. They were working on the physical science standard in which they investigate and describe that energy has the ability to cause motion or create change. I took markers and marker sprayers. Marker sprayers are very neat. They basically turn markers into spray paint. They're hand pumped, so once the air is pumped into the sprayer, the marker sprays like spray paint. So we talked about the potential energy that existed in the sprayer and the kinetic energy that the students were using to create a change in the way the marker behaves. We also talked about drawing a subject that illustrates the concept of energy change, in this case, a volcano. I suggested they draw the still elements of the volcano with traditional marker methods and then spray the marker to indicate the kinetic elements, the steam and the lava. We talked about the identifying energy, identifying the energy changes present in this subject as we worked. So we do a lot of feedback loop during the class. Other times, it's a broader connection being made. So in a third grade science class, we were discussing the big idea that states, quote, "Scientific knowledge is based on observation and inference." It is important to recognize that these are very different things. Not only does science require creativity in its methods and processes, but also in its questions and explanations. I took crystals, minerals, and gemstones to class with me, and we did careful observation as we drew them in wax and oil pastels. Then at the next class meeting, oh, we used vocabulary as we drew, such as color, luster, hardness. And we translated what we saw onto the paper. Then at the next class meeting, the students painted with watercolor to add an imagined natural location where those rocks might be found. Because the rocks were drawn in oil and wax, we call crayons wax pastels, with the older kiss. These portions resisted the watercolor, so the rocks kind of popped out as they painted over them. Not unlike the surprise it would be to unearth one of these interesting rocks in nature. I'm always delighted when I return each week to see the arts integration projects hung on the walls of many of the science classrooms and in the hallways. Some teachers have shared with me, they're using them as graded science assignments. Some teachers like to be involved, even creating projects with us, and some mainly observe and assist with facilitating the project as needed. I had a fourth grade teacher tell me recently that she's even more excited than her students when it's Arts Integration Day. And the students are consistently outwardly affectionate, happy when they see me walk in. They genuinely seem to enjoy it. And several teachers have reported to me that it's apparent in their behavior after class. They're content, engaged, and in a positive mindset after arts integration. I believe this integrated learning feels good because they're asked to bring an artistic mindset to their knowledge building. That is, one that imagines divergent possibilities. They're making, listening, and thinking all at once. It's incredibly rewarding to be part of this whole brain learning or sticky learning, and I do think it sticks with them.
Okay, we're gonna open it up to any comments or questions from board members. Minus, next time, can y'all bring the marker sprayers? I feel like I'm missing out. I think that could be a fun activity for the board. Anyway.
I'm gonna spray a tip.
As long as, yeah, we spray one and off. Yeah, in your space. Anyway. Any board members that wanna ask questions or have thoughts that they wanna share?
I'm curious. Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation and the information. I'm excited about the results you've got, particularly in the language arts area and movement and student achievement with, and student growth for reading. So I would be very interested in knowing which schools you are in and in seeing the results of that. This year, it sounds like you're not, I don't know if you're in all third grade classes at schools or not. But that's something interesting for me. And I would just encourage the board and Dr. Green moving forward that as we really look at what works on literacy, we need to pay attention to data. And this is demonstrative of a resource and partnership that has a proven track record of student achievement. But I can understand why people would like science with an art. So I'm very excited about the work you're doing. Just wanna say thank you. But I would like to know what schools you're in, particularly with that ELA piece. And we'll be very interested to see the data at the end of this year.
Yeah, so Ms. Renfro, maybe if you could get with them afterwards in regards to which, how many ELA classrooms in each of the schools they're in versus the science classrooms, just so we can get an understanding of that. And I think some of the data points you had there, that it was clear you had some groups that weren't and the comparative scores. So it'll be interesting to see in those schools where you're in the ELA classrooms, but maybe not in some. So we've got some like data sets to be able to compare. Any other board members? Board member Willie?
Yeah, to the chair. Thank you so much. It's always great. Big fan of the arts, arts integration. Two quick questions. Bumps that you're seeing, because everyone's experiencing bumps at this sort of juncture. And then what is the future holding? What's blue sky for you as we think about how to support community work, especially with some of the results you're seeing?
Yeah, so the blue sky is, we're really excited about arts integration. We're, as I said, teachers need to have training for arts integration to work well. And so we're investing in teacher training because we just feel this passionately about expanding this program. With regard to bumps, I'll let Louisa or Melanie, because they have a better sense of the advice.
Sure. Not everybody truly knows what arts integration is. So a lot of teachers think like, oh, CAP's art teachers come in and they just teach a lesson. It really is where CAP's art teachers and the academic teacher co-teach together. It's not an extra planning period for the academic teacher, and art teacher comes in and teaches the lesson. So it really is something where they learn together. And when CAP's teacher isn't there next year, if there are lessons that these academic teachers should be able to then teach next year, and we can pair with a different teacher, and it really should be something that then can expand to different teachers. Eventually, you're teaching arts integration district-wide and won't require, right? So bumps in that not everybody understands a true arts integration model, and that's a learning experience for art teachers as well as the academic teachers. So we're learning through those bumps as well. Yeah, no, I think that's, that's it. And it's also what you pair with, right? So art goes really well with science, but art doesn't necessarily go well with another subject. So we're learning through which arts pair best with which academic subjects. Dance goes really well with math. It can also pair well with English, but we're finding it does really well with math, whereas English pairs really well with theater. So we're learning through those things as well.
Vice Chair Pearson.
So I sent Ms. Hammer an email with a link to Reggio Emilia Program, which nobody here seems to know about. But it's the kid that, it's the school that my student, or it's the form of school that my students started in in DC. So I'm also gonna send you a link to the school in DC that they went to that's expanded. But that's kind of my, that'll be my contribution. Is if you don't know Reggio Emilia, it seems like you do. That's what my kids got in pre-K and kindergarten, and yours too. Turning field trips into songs and turning visits to museums into science lessons. And it was, I really think it wired their brain in a way that helped them a lot when they got to IBN High School and now into college, especially for my son who doesn't think that way at all. I think it was so good for him. And so anyway, that's kind of my comment to that, is check out Reggio Emilia. There may be some resources to help speed up that learning curve. But I'm interested in knowing about, I've heard that y'all have a partnership with Goka, that they're opening a new, and I've seen it looks like they're clearing the space for the Global Arts, Global Outreach Charter School behind Crossroad Methodist off Gate Parkway. And when I met with them a few years ago, they said they had a relationship with Cathedral Arts. So I'd just like to know what that looks like.
Yes, we did a few years ago. That has not continued.
Okay.
But we have had it, and it was the same as in DCPS. So we would go into that coming this week. That's pretty much our model. That's, we were doing it.
Okay, but not.
We are not presently doing it. So we had some staff transition at CAP during the pandemic, and so something's just, uh, not renewed.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
I will say, my district, I just wanna thank y'all for the look and grasp. They came into grasp this year with the notion of working with our students with dyslexia and dysgraphia, particularly as it relates to mental health. The frustration level that they have in regards to their learning sometimes and having the arts therapy piece for those students is really, I don't know, it's turning out really nice, and we're hearing lots of positive commentary about it. Little different approach at Grasp than in your other schools, but I really just appreciate the services that you're providing to some of our students who are fragile learners, but are incredibly bright and capable in allowing them an outlet for that mental health piece so that they don't get frustrated with their learning. So thank you to you all for that. There's not any things, oh, yep?
Thank you. I just wanna thank you for the work you've done at SA Hall. I wondered why those kids were so energetic when I went in. You all over, and they started dancing. I said, I told the principal, I said, what's going on?
Too much fun.
Yeah, too much fun. But you made education fun and relevant to their, what they experienced. So I just wanna thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Joyce?
I'll just make a quick comment. I, obviously, Ms. Hammer knows, my kids have gone through levella DA. You know, I've watched art be integrated into their academics, and it definitely improves outcomes. We know that. And so thank you for all the work that you're doing in our schools. I hope we can expand this because, you know, just sitting here as a board member and seeing, you know, a lesson that you, real-life lesson that you teach a student and how, you know, you can just see everybody got excited at the table. And if an adult can get excited about that, then, you know, the kids do. And so it's all about the children, and I just appreciate the work that you do, and I'm a big fan, so. Great, thank you.
On that note, I think we'll leave it on that positive note. Because I think we can all concur with what Board Member Joyce said at that point. Thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing your work with us. We're incredibly grateful, and we look forward to partnering with you all in the future.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna recess this meeting, and we're gonna go into our agenda committee meeting. And we will reconvene this meeting following the agenda committee meeting. So I'm gonna give our people at the end of the table a moment to switch us over. So if you wanna gather your numbers in just a minute, we'll call for them once we switch over. And Dr. Green, thank you. I know you were doing double duty with a face-based breakfast and running simultaneously. We are grateful you can be in several places simultaneously. I don't know. She. I will say, yeah. It's all good. Many places. Lots of people who wanted to be with you this morning. Ready? All right. We're gonna go ahead and get started with your numbers. It looks like one team's ready. Let's start. What? Oh, sorry. The school board of the Duval County School District is now convened in its agenda committee meeting to review the draft agenda for the March 7th, 2023 regular board meeting. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the agenda committee meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we accepted speaker cards for this meeting until the published start time. According, we have no speakers for this morning. According to the CDC's website, Duval County's COVID-19 community level is currently designated as low. The CDC currently recommends indoor mask wearing for people with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-19. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. At this time, we'll move into the draft agenda review, and we'll start with Board Member Lucy. If you will give me your numbers.
Yes, to the chair, I have 10, 30, 31, 10, 30, and 31.
Board Member Hershey?
You can guess. I only have one, and you can guess which one it is. Probably, but I'm going to say.
It's the number on it. I can't remember. I couldn't remember the number offhand. I knew which one it would be, but, all right. Board Member Joyce, coming over to you.
2, 5, 10, 28, and 30.
So 2, 5, 10, 28, and 30. Vice Chair Pearson. Board Member Carney?
2, 5, 10, 16, 17, and 25.
2, 5, 10, 16, 17, and 25. Board Member Jones?
Yes, ma'am. 10, 12, and 17.
10, 12, and 17. And then I had 2 and 5. I'll start with item number 2. God bless you. Public hearing and vote for adoption of pre-calculus honors instructional materials. I'll start with Board Member Joyce.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair to Dr. Green. My first question is, I'm wondering why we are, we did our math adoption, and why was this piece not included when we did our math adoption recently?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. If you remember the math adoption, a number of publishers didn't make it on the state's list. And I believe pre-calculus was the last one that finally made it on the state's list. But I could be a little.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. Yes, that was the year they, yeah, they adopted new review standards. And one of those review standards was eliminating social-emotional learning in curriculum, because it is outside, it's considered outside the scope of teaching the core. And pre-calculus was the last text of the text that we, our review committee recommended. None of those recommended made the state-approved list. So we had to reconvene to just review the one textbook.
Is this the only textbook that is on the state-approved list?
No, there are other textbooks on the state-approved list. The team recommended this book.
Okay. And I guess I was, it says that we have not adopted a pre-calculus honors instructional material since 2000. materials since two thousand thirteen, so ten years.
Good chair to Board Member Joyce, yes.
I i- is that normal? Um why why so long? It seems like the standards have changed in the last ten years. Why would it take so long to re-adopt a book? I'm just curious.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. There are singleton courses that districts may say, well, we don't have, I can't speak from pre um two thousand eighteen, but they may have said, we don't have enough funding to do this singleton course or teachers were happy with the textbook that was utilized since that time. But more than likely, it math has so many singleton high school courses. And when I say singleton, it means it's 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 a unique course that doesn't have a state test tied to it. It does have an end-of-course assessment tied to it for the teacher evaluation. So the district has a lot more flexibility. So that might be why they haven't purchased one in ten years. However, uh over the last two years, when the math adoption, we made a conscious effort to update every um math course textbook.
Okay, thank you. Um and my last question is in the gap analysis. Um. I'm trying, what does it mean when it says that this textbook and provide for cultural relevance? How does the cultural relevance piece apply to a calculus math course? I'm just kind of wondering why that language is in the um gap analysis.
Through the chair, um this is still tied to the best standards and the change in standards. It has nothing to do with, if you were trying, it has nothing to do with um cultural relevance in the sense that they're teaching anything uh related to diversity, equity. But calculus, pre-calculus, we have students that come from many areas and ensuring that we support all students taking this very advanced course.
Can you give me an example of what that looks like?
An example, since I'm not a math. I'm not. I have to give a math example. Um so pre-calculus is a pre-exit course for calculus. And so it has the ability to scaffold. So we all might be in the pre-calculus course. Uh you are the gifted one, Ms. Hershey's the gifted one, and the rest of us are just average and Mr. Poole might be just a tad below. So this book has the ability to help recognize that and scaffold. So I'm, the teacher may need to do something very specific for Mr. Poole versus the 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 average and then you and Ms. Hershey, who are the gifted ones, uh will help scaffold, put you in a section that is going to help you be a better math person. This course is trying to get all students prepared to be in the calculus. You shouldn't be taking pre-calculus unless you're going to take calculus. So that is.
And that's why I went to law school.
So glad that we know why you went to law school now.
Add it to that.
Yes.
Uh through the chair, also, I mean, I I I want to piggyback and I think the cultural relevant pieces, yes, that, but it's also math problems, word problems. If you talk about, hey, you're going on a trip to Paris and nobody's ever been to Paris before.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to me. So maybe it's like, we're going to the grocery store. It's a better example than I'm going on a yacht and sailing and this is the mast and it's like, I don't understand that. So I think the cultural relevance piece is also making it more relevant to a student that hasn't experienced certain things is my is my thought as well.
I completely agree with that. Um but I was just wondering why we would use the language in the gap analysis, but thank you for the um. That was awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Poole, for saying that. Bless them.
We tell he's glad to be a set. Uh Board Member Carney. I'm. You're good now? Um Board Member Willie.
Through the chair, can we get, uh bring back on, because they take an end-of-course test too, right? Do we have the results of like what that looks like as far as the students that have gone through the course and taken?
Through the chair to Board Member Willie. They would, it would be based on the old pre-calculus.
Right.
Yeah, but every course has an end-of-course exam.
Yeah, that's just one would be interesting to see.
All right, so and my questions were answered through Board Member Joyce's questions on that item, so we'll move on. Um let's go to item number five. We'll start with Board Member Carney. And Board Member, I'm sorry, item number five, approval of non-bargaining unit salary schedules for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Again, um Board Member Carney.
Through the chair, I just had a quick question. Is this, are these increases coming from the new referendum we passed with the knowledge?
Through the chair to Board Member Carney, no. This is the, at the very beginning of the year, we have an executive session with the board that says this is what we're asking, would you give us approval to? And I believe that was preview.
Preview.
Preview. So it it's within those um allowable percentages, except for the new funding.
All right, and Board Member Joyce.
Um yeah, through the chair to Dr. Green. I know that in the bargaining units, we gave percentages, percentage increases, and I can't remember all of those percentage increases. I'm wondering if I could get comparing what we're, what you're asking for non-bargaining units compared to what we've given to bargaining units. That can be a bringback. Um I just want to kind of compare that. So the gap in the gap analysis, I was wondering, in the bargaining units, what did we increase it to? And then um. Um and then in the previous outcomes, we approved a salary increase last year in January. What was the percentage we approved that last year? I mean, I can go back through the book, kind of seeing where we came from this last year to where we're going this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah. You good?
Thank you.
And actually, that was right along the lines of what I was looking for, just um the percentage increase this year versus percentage increase in the last couple of years, just to see, are we holding about the same or not? You know, where are we as a board? All right.
Through through the chair.
Yes.
Um this is the highest percentage that we've thought, as long as that has been some pretend it's ever offered.
Okay.
Um six. That is what the board. You have to take the um instructional personnel out because that's based on how the categorical funding we receive from the state, so that's different. But of all the other groups, I believe the board gave us approval up to six percent.
Up to?
Six percent.
Thank you. Um just want to make sure that's the job market out there continues to do what it's doing, that we're doing what we need to do. Um moving on to item number ten, and I've got multiple people on this one, I will start with Board Member Jones. Um Board Member, uh I'm sorry, item number ten is school district five-year capital plan twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. And again, Board Member Jones, you'll get us started.
I just uh want to thank Dr. Green on item six uh with the Juneteenth on the. Uh that uh last year was very confusing on how to uh take that day for those who wanted to do so. So item six clears that up with Juneteenth holiday. So I just want to thank, and I forgot we needed to bargain that, that's why. We couldn't do it last year, so it does clarify that particular holiday. And on item ten. With the uh the uh PICO dollars that we pass, pass through, direct pass through to the charter schools, we don't get any of that funding. Are we allowed to recover any of the costs involved in transferring that money from DCPS to charter schools?
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, there is a set indirect cost that school districts uh are allowed to assess to charter schools and based on their performance, that that's different. So if they are considered a high performing, it's based on two hundred and fifty students. So the percentage is different for each charter school, but that is the only thing we're allowed to.
We can recover some of the costs with this pass, even though it's PICO dollars.
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, no. That was, I'm sorry.
That's what I was.
Is that the answer? No, but we get a very, a set percent for indirect costs for sort of school district.
One of those areas where you might want to address without legislative platform. Won't go anywhere. Thank you.
Great. Board Member Joyce.
Okay, um. I guess I'm, in the previous outcomes, um the set last sentence or the last little statement is this agenda item and then the prior plan by reclassifying sales, surtax funds and uh. Why do we, why do we need to reclassify? I guess that's just my whole question about this one. Why was there a need to reclassify?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. Remember, the district went out for a bond and a cop's bond, so the certificate of participation. Those projects could have been classified under straight capital or half-cent sales tax. This is a different funding source. It's called certificate of participation. So those projects that are now moving under the certificate of participation, you have to reclassify because you're using a different funding source.
Great. Board Member McCartney. Two, five, ten, sixteen. Not I could go to Board Member.
You can pass on the.
Okay. Board Member Willie, I have you with ten.
Yeah, I think my question was answered. I had questioned around because they said there was, there was no financial change. It was basically a reclassification. Um and then I had a question about PICO that was not, it's it's fine, so I'm good. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to Board Member Hershey's favorite item. Item number twelve, disposal of the former West Jacksonville Elementary, number one forty-three site by donation to the city of Jacksonville. And I will, of course, let Board Member Hershey lead with this item, but I will. Okay, Board Member Jones.
Okay. No, I just uh thank you, kind of chair. Uh just had one, I guess, maybe a legal question. What happens if uh Cedar Jacksonville decides to sell the property? Are they allowed to do that now?
Through. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Sorry. Through the chair to Board Member Jones, on page one. Convenance and restrictions, the property shall be used only as a public community center or for other public recreational uses with oversight provided by the grantees, Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. And if you skip down, it also says, uh. Grantee agrees to commence use of the property within two years after the recording date of this deed with a mutual understanding that such use may commence in phases, some of which may occur more than two years after the recording date of this deed. Um it does have a clawback clause in it as well. If it is not you, is it within two?
Yeah.
If you do nothing at two years, it comes back to Duval County Public Schools.
And and we have to agree.
Yes.
They can come back to us and say, we don't want that.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's good. I I was, I wanted to make sure that was in there because there will be a change. Administrations come through last first and they want to uh sell the uh community short and tell them that we're gonna build a community center and they turn around and decide for another use. Thank you very much.
Board Member Hershey.
Thank you for that language. I'm sure you put in there, you know, the not bullet. And so I do, I appreciate you hearing me in former meetings. Um but I have a couple of questions. One is, how many schools have we now given to the city of Jacksonville?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, are you speaking since the issue of the referendum? Because prior to that, I could answer. Um through the chair, two, Brentwood Elementary to the public library, which technically is the city of Jacksonville, and this would be the second.
I thought, it seems like we've had more, maybe that's just me. I thought there were three or four. Um.
And Lake Forest went too.
Lake Forest is through affordability housing.
Affordability housing. Um. I I just, again, I'm wary of giving the city property. And the the point to me, when we were consolidating schools and building new schools, was that we would have value in the land and that we would sell that and that could then be some revenue that could then be turned into other capital needs. And so I would say that we always want our land back because that is an asset to the district. And you know, I I it just seems like every time we're gonna close a school, we're gonna give it to the city of Jacksonville and I have a problem with that. Um I I just, I remember conversation when we were going through this, Board Member Jones, and you can correct me if if I quote you wrong, but I know that he expressed um the importance of the school district taking action to ensure uh properties that we abandoned do not become properties and disrepair at the cost of light in a community. And we are closing a school, consolidating a school, and then letting the city have two years where people are gonna still think we own it and not the city. So that's just that. I I like the idea. I haven't seen the plan. Maybe that made me feel better if you brought in a picture of what the city was gonna do and how it's gonna look like and what they were gonna do to work with communities to use that properly. But I I I will ponder my vote on this, but I I am hesitant to continue to uh give the city land um without some specific detail. And I I'm just, I have a concern that it will sit there and has the the opportunity to become blight. And if, I that's just my concern and I know I say it all the time, so I'll stop.
I I totally agree. I that that's my major concern. We don't want to see it blight. And we've already had to go out at least twice, once for uh Florida, pounds of fire in the school and then once because the homeless person moved in. So it is a liability for us and that liability now will rest with the city until uh uh I guess until they start, uh the chairman, the uh director of Parks and Recreation, who may or may not be there come through last first, have already asked in there to put two million dollars in the budget so they can renovate uh the the school for a community. So I will make sure that uh we get information to you so you can rest assured that they plan to move forward again with, in light of, if they have a new mayor, we just, there's no guarantee. That's why I revert the clause is so critical in this point.
Board Member McCartney, through the chair, are they are planning on renovating the existing structure or are they going to raise the existing, the existing structure? Do we know at this point?
Yeah, through the chair, uh according to the director of Public Works, I I would ask the same question, say they plan to renovate existing.
It's my, that would be my concern. It's a lot different if we we turn it over to the city and they come in and they bulldoze it and we have just a vacant lot sitting there versus a deteriorating structure for the next, another two years. Um and I concur with Board Member Hershey. The city has a hard enough time keeping up with the parks we already have. And so to, I I share the same concerns. I'm worried about what's going to happen going forward with that, with that structure, so.
Well, to the chair, the good news about this particular project is the city already owns the park right behind us. And they're gonna, they have two small centers, one is the senior citizen center that we met, no air conditioning. And then one community center, both have been closed because they needed something larger. So they already maintaining the bulk of that property in the way. And this just give them additional profit to maintain, but also to demolish the existing community center.
Board Member Willie.
Through the chair, because we went through this with Brentwood and that was one of the main things I know uh stories that I talked about was the timeline of it, like once we give it away, like who then takes control, how long is it gonna be? So I appreciate this new language in here and I'm just wondering, is this gonna be? So I appreciate this new language in here. And I'm just wondering, is this going to be, two questions, is this going to be some common language that we have as we move forward? And then the second, um, that's the, that's the first question. If we can sort of just talk, is this going to be our common sort of boilerplate language as we move forward now? If we do any sort of um deals or contracts with the, with the city?
Yeah, good. Through the chair and Board Member Willie, we, I think based on discussion here today, we're going to obviously try to get this in any future. It's just a balance for us between the demolition costs to have a clear greenfield, which is close to a half a million dollars. But that would prevent any blight. If we um, if we, if we do that, that that's, that's the other choice. So we'll try to get this reverter language in if at all possible. Any future uh closures to come forward. We'll have more in the future. You'll see us use schools as swing spaces temporarily for multiple different reasons. But eventually most closed school facilities that are not repurposed are going to have to make that choice either. This type of language to ensure reuse or funded for demolition, which is what they are.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I just think of this, uh, I think that's great. I also think the Brentwood project, um, I think will be a good tell. If the city and others are actually doing and how much time it takes and whatnot, because I think that's the first one out the gate and it'll be interesting. Because I think it's the same concern I have is how long is it going to take? There's a lot of nuances. Who's leading? Who's not? Who's in position anymore? So it's just something for us to keep an eye. Thank you.
Um, and I I will say on this, I have the same concerns and coupled them with the fact that having. You were kind enough to allow me to come to your community meeting, having seen the way the city keeps those facilities. Um, it was deplorable and unacceptable. Um, and so um, it's not just about getting the right structure there. It's also the upkeep in the long run so that it's actually serviceable for a community. No seniors should have been in an unair-conditioned building and there were a whole bunch of them and it was hot for me and I wasn't eighty. Um, and it's a senior citizen center. So I I I struggle um with what I saw. So I I have some concerns as well. I I hopeful, appreciate the work that y'all done. And I think you've done as best you can with the situation, but the city needs to do its part as well. Um, moving on to item number sixteen, um, award contract for roof replacement at Neptune Beach Elementary School. ES number two four six, uh DC uh DCSP, project number P eight three, uh eight zero zero, ITV zero two twenty-three. Uh slash LM, and I have Board Member Carney.
Through the chair, Mr. Sora. I just, did we bid this out earlier and I maybe had missed? This or wasn't here yet? So I was just curious how we came to award this contract to.
Through the chair, these contracts are competitively awarded and and then resulted in construction contract through AGC. You wanted to sign off and complete the award.
Okay. I appreciate this is happening. I know MBE needs a new roof very badly. So thank you for that.
All right.
Moving to number seventeen, selection and award of contractor commercial building code inspection services, RFP number eighteen dash twenty-three slash backslash TW. I'm going to start with Board Member Jones.
Uh, thank you, that's the chair. To the chair, to Dr. Green. Once we hire the uh the private firm, I think we hired two, commercial building code inspector. Well, I would stay after being reviewed to make sure it's, I guess, just want to make sure that that we have to have checks and balances to make sure that. Inspections are being carried out properly. And we did that with the city. There was issues with the private companies not following through with some of the inspections.
Through the chair to Board Member Jones, the reason we are doing this uh award is because, one, we cannot find. Individuals to be under quote and all the, there's so many certificates they have to have. So you might find some, but they don't have this certificate or that. Currently, I believe we two.
Or we have uh three inspectors in one building.
Yeah, um, so we have three in one. And with all of the new projects that are coming online. Our people just can't handle. So for us to ask them to then go back while they're trying to do what what they can handle. We needed to have this contract uh bid it out for uh use when they are overwhelmed and we can move other projects. I think the uh Jacobs, that is why we are very. Excited about our contract with Jacobs. They have all also stepped in whenever we needed support. So I think it will be a combination of our people, our contract with Jacobs. And utilizing these two firms and to help make sure our projects aren't like at a standstill because we can't get code enforcement to maybe.
So because they have a certification certificate, uh our folks don't need to review.
Yes, that is correct.
That's that they produce an affidavit. They carry certifications on that, but they have to produce an affidavit certifying that that's inaccurate and it's issue of fraud and so.
That that gives us an extra assurance that it wasn't taken.
That's right, by law, by penalty of all.
Thank you.
Board Member Carney.
Uh, through the chair, Dr. Green. I noticed here we've, so we're using two different services contractors, but we have a lump amount of one point nine five. And so I was curious, one, could we see that power paying them broken out per contractor? And how many inspectors are we receiving for that amount?
Through the chair, the Board Member Carney, um, the amount shown is um, first of all, driven. By requirement to have a maximum indebtedness on each contract, something that AGC requires. These are act, these are actually a definite quantity contract. So when you make this award, you don't obligate anything. You order what you need. Now, we have a a working estimate based on a worst case scenario where. There's no building that we can't rehire building code officials and we have to rely on this contract almost exclusively. So that's, that's what the cost you're saying. In the attachments, it's broken down to roughly one point two million for one vendor, seven hundred for the other vendor. So you see it in the individual contracts, what amount maximum to each, but it's all going to depend on what we actually order. The costs are, you know, quite possibly going to be lower, especially if we're successful in hiring or whatever, which we're trying to do aggressively. We're also working with the city to try to get it rid of multiple things to try to cover.
We'll move on to item number twenty-five, um, periodic report at phase three construction drawings for major maintenance and minor capital projects under a million dollars. Um, I have Board Member Carney on this item. Twenty-five.
You got it. Through the chair, so my questions are about um Fletcher High School. Um, I just wanted a little bit more detail about the secure vestibule. Is that secure, is that upgrading safety and security for that item? Is that what that is for? Okay. And then the storefront replacement, what happened there? Just curious.
Chair, Board Member Carney, that's a specific project. If you walk into Fletcher, you know, from the side, you go to one building, you have a series of doors at the other buildings. That doorway is considered a storefront, replacing the doors, reinforcing the glass, improving the security of that entrance. So that's what the project does. It improves, replaces doors, replaces windows, and it improves the overall security of that entrance. We call it a storefront.
All right, you got it. Board Member Hershey.
Through the chair, I am thankful that Atlantic Coast is getting additional orbitals for their growth. And I see the Baldwin is too. Just wanted to know, where is Baldwin and where is Atlantic Coast? Isn't Baldwin, I hope it's a rebuild, I've seen it out there. And I wanted to know what what phase that rebuild is is in, as well as what phase is Atlantic Coast's wing in? If we're already putting boards out there, but.
I see Mr. Sora is nodding on all of that.
Through the chair, Baldwin has a rebuild.
Right, and when is that starting on base?
Twenty twenty-six.
Two, I think they're both in phase two.
Through the chair, Baldwin is scheduled to start going into design in twenty twenty-six, reopening twenty twenty-nine. Uh, Atlantic Coast is further out than like twenty-nine thirty. Um, because at the time we put the master facility plan together, that area wasn't growing yet. We put that wing in there with the expectation that it was going to be justified at some point. And now you're seeing justification coming. So it's further out early twenty-nine thirty. We had to pull it forward. That's something that as we do enrollment projections. We'll have to see what's needed, but it's, it's, it's further out right now.
Right, and that was what I thought. You know, there are not only ETL, but seven pines is coming in. Plus every place you can put a condominium or apartment in in that area. And I believe that Atlantic Coast is getting close to being one, if it's not, it's close to being the larger high school, isn't it? Competing with uh Sandalwood in enrollment at this particular point.
It's still, I think like twenty-three, twenty-four.
It's through the chair, it's still about a couple, several hundred, at least three hundred. Sandalwood, they know what day of week is, could be at three thousand.
Right.
And let it's get, let it cause this is the second large, it's not the school, so.
It's closing the gap. You know, I just think we need to keep an eye on that because of, you wait till twenty twenty-nine might need more than a one wing.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Pearson.
I would say in conversation, uh, when I met with the principal at Sandalwood, he was asking me, so when's my wing coming? Because uh they are versing at the seams as well and and really feeling it. Um, and they're, they're not in. I I explained to him that Mandarin and Fletcher are getting their wings first, um, and you're next. So that I think a lot of schools are feeling that crunch of needing more space.
And I will say, I appreciate the fact that we're doing the population study once each year instead of every five years and then it was three years. And now we're to once every year because these conversations are, you know, we, that will help guide those decisions and that work to shift items. So thank you for that. Let's move to item twenty-eight, uh, public hearing and vote revisions to chapter nine board policy. I have Board Member Joyce on that item.
I know that we discussed this in our board's policy meeting. I just need some help remembering. Uh, so this is, I, this is my statute, board members can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm specifically speaking to item number seven under Board Member and Legislative Members School visits. Um, the lang, we're adding language, but this is not a different statute or anything. And I'm just, are we just trying to clarify that in policy so that district staff knows? That board members and legislative members can just come into their schools or?
That's exactly, through the chair, uh, there was already the language in the statute with respect. There was no need to put in there because you're older employees. We felt there was a need to enhance this, the policy because now you get outside. They had the ability to come in on the campus and walk around the campus unaccompanied, et cetera, and tell them what they had to do. So I think all that was uh appropriate for that to the policy to clarify.
And we are communicating this to our principals.
Once approved, yes.
Once it's approved. Um, my other question was around, in the um language here, it says, in the district. Uh, look, I can go into any of schools in my district. My impression was I could go into any school within. I mean, any, with with any schools in the the district. So if I wanted to go into Board Member Carney's school. I could do the same thing at her school that I could at my school and it would not affect whether I was the representative of that school or not. I just wanted some clarification there.
I will say, um, uh, we did have conversation around that. So I appreciate the clarification. It's state law. It's my understanding that for full school district, you can go into any school. We refer to our districts though, so it kind of confuses things. Um, and we've just customarily always let one another know if we're going into one another's schools. But legally, we can do whatever we want to do.
I would like clarification in the language before we vote on that.
Appreciate that.
Because I think even if we have, you know, a member of a legislative member in our community. Uh, that wants to go into a school somewhere and someone, they need to understand that they have the uh ability to do that in the language. So.
Board Member Carney, you want to add?
Through the chair, yeah, perhaps maybe we could add, say county in Duval County versus district so that there's some.
Well, it says, visit any district school in his or her school district.
Right, I should say in.
At county.
In the county.
The the attempt was to mirror the language in the statute, um, which is what this language does, but we can certainly clarify. So the language was throughout the state. So in your district was in this school district. Um, but if we want to clarify in the school district.
Because so many have at-large members and all that kind of stuff and we're different. Can, can we clarify DCPS district versus voting member district, board district? Because we do, yeah, so sticking, yeah. I appreciate that. Um, moving to item thirty, uh, public hearing and vote.
Excuse me, we need to, it's changed on my document, but maybe it's not changed on everybody else's. Um, the, through the chair, on. Nine point zero, nine point three zero, use of facilities and grounds. It is the second page. It says H, letter H, food distribution events that are approved. That word approve should be initiated. So just so you know, that's going to change.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that? All right, we will move on to item number thirty, public hearing and vote revisions to chapter two board policies. Um, I have Board Member Joyce, um, and Board Member Willie on that. Start with Board Member Joyce. Item number thirty. Chapter two board policies. While you're looking, I'll go to Board Member Willie. You've had that item.
I do. Yeah, this is about the AAC, right? Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification because this is one piece of it, but we didn't actually get into the piece around. Making sure we we put into language about them being oversight group or the one mill. So just wanted to get clarity on where we are to make sure we all know we're voting.
Anyone want to add? Um, I, what I understood to be true was we were going to go with the policy as was and then come back on that. I, please correct me if I'm incorrect, but we were going to come back, given the timeline for advertising everything else, drafting language and whatnot. We were going to go ahead and improve as is and then come back and add that other piece in after we had had discussion with the parties.
With the group AAC.
Right.
They wanted some clarification before we put in a policy. We just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Right.
Or the expectation was.
Uh, I think the thought was to take some of that language, um, and make sure that the committee was aware of it. And then bring it back to the next board policy, even though that chapter would be out of sequence in terms of review. But but not to hold up these changes, go ahead and 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 push these through was my interpretation. Please correct me if I'm incorrect. I have Mr. McDuffie's nodding that I, that my memory serves me correct, which is good because I'm getting old and sometimes it doesn't serve me as correct as it used to with the intent.
Prior to July.
Correct. We did look at, and you're, uh, Board Member Hershey, thank you, we did look at timeline as to when we needed it done. Um, and that we were still in, if I remember correctly, uh, Ms. Thompson helped us look at the timeline. And making sure that we um would still be okay with when the monies would start coming to the district. We still had enough time to go to board policy, advertise and approve. Um, so are we good on that?
I'm good. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear. I don't know if everybody was at that policy, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear. If we went in talking about one thing, but then we didn't actually get that, but I'm clear.
Any other thoughts on that item? But we, what, we are under a time scenario with it to get it all done by the time we start receiving funds. But we're still clear. We can still make it happen. Okay, um, Board Member Joyce, so I'm going to strike you on item thirty. All right, um, I'm going to move to item number thirty-one, Board Member Willie, public hearing and vote. All right, um, I'm gonna move to item number thirty one, board member Willie, public hearing and vote revisions to chapter six board policies.
Uh, yeah, through the chair, I know we had a conversation, I think this was, the, when we had the linked conversation, it was about substitute teachers, I believe, in this one. So I wanted to get clear on where we landed there and make sure the folks know where we are. And also for for us as a board to make sure we are, we're clear about that. There was an age sort of piece that we talked about.
Through the chair, the board member Willie, it's on page two thirty six. That is substitute teacher six point one seven. Um, it state the change, since I wasn't present, but substitute teachers under the age of twenty one with a high school diploma or less than sixty credit hours shall be limited to assignments within elementary grade levels. And then substitute teachers with, substitute teachers at least twenty one years of age or with less, with with at least, I don't know why I can't say less, sixty credit hours, um, may be assigned to both elementary and secondary grade levels.
So.
So you're a high school age, you're not twenty one, you're only allowed to substitute in elementary grades.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure we publicly talked about that because this is a, it's a, because that was the tension. It was like, what, you're, you just graduated from high school and now you're going back to teach your friends? So this.
We were a little unsure of that.
So, but this is helpful, helpful language and hopefully it helps push additional folks to come into the, into the fold.
For our little ones, yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, having worked with high school, I. Uh, that can be interesting.
A good age.
All right, any other comments on that or any other clarifying? Although, uh, thank you to Assistant Superintendent Schultz and her team for the creativity in terms of trying to get more substitutes and increase, uh, the ability to get more substitutes, so thank you. Are there any other questions on agenda items? That's all the numbers I have. All right, so we are good. Um, seeing that we have no public comments, I'm gonna move on to adjourning this meeting. Do I have a motion? Uh, the motion by vice chair Pearson and second by board member Jones, all those in paper signaled by saying yay.
Yay, yay.
Any opposed? That's a unanimous vote, passes seven to zero. We're gonna go ahead and give, um, let me do a ten minute break and that will give the admin time to switch over systems. When we come back, we will work on the comprehensive student support guide, uh, that will be our board workshop topic. So we'll take a ten minute break, we'll be back at ten twenty five. I need a gavel. Mickey Schultz is gabbling with me, thank you Mickey. Mickey, always there to assist. Thank you. All right, we are gonna reconvene, um, at this time, we are reconvening to our board workshop. Um, and our topics to be discussed are the comprehensive student support guide. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we're gonna start with our O G C attorneys, Laura Beckman and Ariel Cook. I'm gonna ask whenever you're ready for the slide, it just kind of nods your head and talks and will.
I think, go ahead, we can move to the next slide. My name's Laura Beckman, I'm with the Office of General Counsel and I'm here with Ariel Cook. Um, and we have been working closely with the staff on the changes to the student support guide. And I just wanted to give you kind of a brief overview of the legal landscape that drove some of the changes that we had to make. So there's three layers of law that applies to, uh, the changes that we've made to the student support guide. So we've got administrative rules, so six A dash ten point zero eight six. Um, is an administrative rule that says that, um, if bathrooms are segregated by biological sex, that that information, or if they're not segregated by biological sex, that parents have to be notified how bathrooms are going to be, how they're going to be segregated. And has, if they're not segregated by biological sex, then there has to be an opportunity for students to be able to have access to a bathroom that has been segregated by biological sex. And then six A dash ten point zero eight five is the administrative rule that governs locker rooms. Similar to the bathrooms, has to be segregated, or they have to be, you have to notify parents how you're going to segregate locker rooms if it's by biological sex. Or if not, then they have to provide an opportunity for students to access a locker room that is segregated by biological sex. And then we also have a Florida statute, one thousand and one point four two subsection eight C, which is the Florida statute that requires that parents be notified if there's a change in student services or monitoring. And so you'll see that reflected in the changes to the student support guide. And then in addition, we had in December of last year, just a few months ago, the Eleventh Circuit, which is the federal appellate court that governs Florida, Georgia and Alabama, so it's binding on Florida, came out with a decision, Adams versus the School Board of St. John's County. And that was a case that had been percolating for several years, um, where the Eleventh Circuit came out. And so St. John's County had a policy that their bathrooms were segregated by biological sex. And a transgender student sued the School Board of St. John's County saying that that was discrimination. And essentially, the Eleventh Circuit came out and said, no, it's not. It is not discrimination to segregate bathrooms based on biological sex. Um, and so the, the policy in St. John's County was upheld in that case. And so those, that's kind of the legal landscape of what you'll, you'll see the changes to the student support guide that we've had to make. And so based on O G C's analysis of the current status of the student support guide, um, we believe that it complies with the state and federal law the way it's currently written. And I'm happy to take any questions now or as we go through this as well.
I think when I looked at it, um, last night, if you want to get through the bullying part and then maybe we'll pause there and stop and do some questions there and then go to the next part. There seemed to be a break point there, maybe.
Sure, that would be fine.
If that works for everyone, if there's an urgent question, as always, um, they'll stop.
Good morning, everyone. Um, Brian McDuffin, Executive Director, Office of Policy and Compliance, and I just wanted to kind of go over what we have done training wise with respect to, uh, making sure that district staff understands the requirements on the parental notification procedure and process. Uh, as you may recall, the board approved the parental notification of changing support services procedures back in July of twenty twenty two. Um, we subsequently engaged principals in training in August of twenty twenty two. Uh, again, I believe in September of twenty twenty two. Um, and then also, I'm sorry, July of twenty twenty two and then August of twenty twenty two. And then we had another refresher training in January of twenty twenty three with respect to our frequently asked questions. Gave principals another opportunity to make sure that they understood what the requirements were. Uh, in addition to that, the procedures are also posted on the district website. We have also met with school counselors to train them on the procedures. Uh, I've also taken pains to coordinate with the D C U, I'm sorry, the, uh, Teachers Union Council to make sure that the advice that they are giving to the teachers aligns with the district procedures and the district, uh, process. Uh, and as always, our office has been available to principals and school counselors when there are any questions with respect to the implementation of the procedures. Are there any questions?
Go two more slides and then, oh, the bullying slide, I saw the slide five, so we'll keep moving and then we'll. This is really just a transition slide. But I will just take this, this opportunity to share with the board, um, just by, um, the change in the comprehensive student support guide is exactly that. If you'll recall, originally, we started out with, um, a support guide that addressed just one of these components, which was the L G B T Q component. Um, it was the desire of the superintendent to have a more comprehensive guide, which is what, um, we're sharing with you today. So all of these other areas, school health services, bullying and harassment, um, mental health services, crisis intervention and E S E services have all been added so that there is now a comprehensive tool. Uh, so team members are going to go through and just kind of briefly share, um, a summary of each one of the sections uh, and an opportunity to talk about the resources that are available to our schools, starting with school health services.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Elizabeth Trisoto, Director of School Health Services. And I just want to say it's so nice to speak to you all about something other than COVID nineteen. So, um, the school health services program has been around since the state statute three eight one point zero zero five six was established. It's developed jointly by both the school district as well as the Florida Department of Health. So we work in partnership to implement this program throughout the school district. It's designed to promote and the health of our students and to provide preventative and emergency services to our students. Uh, we offer services such as treating students for minor illnesses and injuries. We provide medication administration. We also do state managed screenings such as hearing, B M I, scoliosis, vision. And we do health promotion. And then we also have a team of nurses that provide direct nursing services to our students. Whether we have students that are medically complex and need G two feeds, trichostomy care, urinary catheterizations, our team of nurses provide those services so our students can be able to come to school and receive their education. Um, the, the student, um, guidebook also outlines how parents can opt out of any or all of our school health services that we provide. And it also includes step-by-step instructions on how the school can run a report for, to see if there are any students that have opted out of those services um, based on the entire school or on student specific information. So if they wanted, needed to look up just one particular student who came to the clinic, that nurse can go ahead and look up that student, see if the student has received any opt-outs for that, um, service. And then they know whether or not to provide those services or to contact the parent for further instruction.
Good morning. I'm Anna Dewey, Executive Director of Student Discipline and Support Services. Very nice to be before you today. Um, I do want to give an update for bullying and harassment, not many changes with our protocols. Um, I want to let you know the major piece that we have is to ensure that all parents or students are able to report acts or alleged acts of bullying or any types of harassment. Um, once that occurs, there is an investigation that occurs on the campus. Sometimes those investigations, um, are brought to our office through the district, um, with our bullying harassment hotline. Um, the person that we have on staff that helps moderate and keep track of all of those instances is Heather Watson. And she is a licensed psychologist. Um, so we're very grateful that parents are able to call us at a moment's notice. Um, some of you even receive emails and then you send them to us, so we're able to help in those cases. The most important thing that, um, I think comes from the bullying, or if parents feel like their kids are not safe on campus, is the, um, addition of the Hope Scholarship. And so with the Hope Scholarship, um, if a parent tells the, the principal or the dean on campus or the assistant principal, um, I feel safe with my child on this campus, I feel like my child has been bullied, this is a report, these are the accusations. And at that prompting, the Hope Scholarship is offered. Um, with the Hope Scholarship, we work in tandem with the School Choice Office to ensure that, um, students are able to be placed at a school um, that is with capacity in, in order to, um, have them on those campuses. Um, also, the final thing that I want to let you know is all of the cases of bullying or Hope Scholarships are documented in my office. So if you need any of those records or information, just contact me and I can get that to you at a moment's notice. I think I'm the questions person.
You, we are, this is, this is where we're gonna break for a second and see if the board has any question. I always just try to find us a break point, this seemed to be the slide with the break point in it. Um, any questions from the board or anything to this moment that you'd like, board member Joyce?
Sure. Through the chair to, uh, Ms. Trisoto. Uh, in the parent guardian opt-out piece, um, it says that they can opt out of some or all of the services provided. Can you, can you, um, like, give me a visual of, I'm a parent, I'm going on to focus like. First of all, how do I receive the information of what health services are provided to my child? And then if, how many are there? And how do they opt out? Because I've heard parents who don't want to opt their children out to all health services, but they are, some of the health services they do, that they, if their child gets a band, you know, cut and needs a Band-Aid, they can still receive those sort of services. So what does that process look like? How many services? How lengthy is it that, you know, how much time does it take for a parent to go through all of that?
Sure, through the chair to board member Joyce. So the parents, we've always had the option for parents to opt out of our screening services. Um, that was prior to allowing them to opt out of clinic services. So they can opt, they've always been able to opt out of the hearing, the vision, the B M I and the scoliosis. So they still have the option to go ahead and opt out of those services. And now they also have the option to opt out of clinic services, which would be the Band-Aids, um, nursing assessments. And it's all grouped into that clinic services. So if we have a student that comes in, let's say with a tummy ache, um, the nurse might be asking them what they've had to eat that day. It might be doing a nutrition assessment on them. And then they're doing a nursing assessment to make sure that they're doing okay, contacting the parent if necessary. And so that's why we, we clumped those into clinic services. So if the parent has opted out of clinic services, and if the student were to come in for something, then we would just contact the parent as opposed to doing their temperature and going forth with those.
Is there a comprehensive list of clinical services?
Yes, there is a comprehensive list of clinical services. Those services are outlined on the emergency contact authorization and student release form that the parents receive at the beginning of each school year. And then we also have that list on our school health services website. It actually breaks down each of those services and provides a description of each of those services.
Could I, could you send that to me now?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And I, I will say, I want to thank you for putting the actual pictorial in the student guide, um, because it helped me look and see how easy it could be. Um, and so anyway, I, but I didn't see the listing of the services in here. It may have been in here and I missed it when I was reading last night, but anyway.
That's a follow-up there. So what we're saying is when you opt out of clinical services, you just, you're not getting a Band-Aid or any of those things. You're getting a phone call home.
That is correct. The way this reads is the parent is not necessarily have to give permission.
That's not what the, the, the rule does not require parental permission. So the rule requires us to provide parental notification and to adopt procedures for that process. Uh, and so that's what we are complying with, with respect to the rule. So there is no parental consent with respect to this.
May I, would you please draw the distinction between the legal documents versus the non, because there's a, I mean, you still, for the legal change, it's a court docu, I mean, can you make sure you clarify that piece of the puzzle too? Because I, I think we need to make sure we're thinking about, there, it doesn't uniformly happen across everything for that child in the system unless there's a court document. So can you go through that one more time? I know you already said it, but would you mind reiterating?
Right, through the chair. Uh, so if a student wants to, uh, change their pronoun, uh, that would initiate, automatically, that's gonna initiate parental notification. Uh, if a student wants to, wishes to change, we talk about unofficial documents, the class roster, um, their, uh, student I D card, yearbook, um, I D, uh, whatever, yearbook, student roster, um. What, I'm sorry.
Those are the main ones?
Yeah, those are the main ones.
Their badge, the roster and, and, and the yearbook.
So those would be considered unofficial documents. So a student can change the, can ask, can ask for a preferred name on those. Student cannot change transcripts, something that we are reporting to the state of Florida, that name cannot be changed.
And, and focus.
In focus.
Correct. Or, uh, vice chair Pearson.
It was interesting in the, I went to four G S A meetings. And one, if not two of them, the students asked about this. And they asked if we could go back to, um, having their club sponsor make the change. And because what they expressed was they aren't even asking for their names to be changed in the unofficial documents because they don't want the notification to go to the parents. So there is a, um, first layer of, I think, keeping students from even asking. Just the presence of the policy is keeping some students from even asking to have the name changed because they don't want the notification to go to the parents. And that, and that was just an interesting, it came up in at least two of the G S A meetings that I went to where, when Mr. Schneider asked, what can we do? And that was one of the things that the students brought up is we want the club sponsor to be able to initiate the name change instead of having to, um, go through our, instead of our parents being notified. Like, they wanted it handled on the school level instead of it being kicked to the parents for, um, at least notification, if not approval. So anyway, I'm just throwing that in for what it's worth, it was interesting.
Through the chair, I mean. Through the chair, I mean, the student, when you say initiate, I mean, to me, when the student, even the student asks the sponsor, that's an initiation of the name change. So whether or not they ask the sponsor, whether they opt, they ask the principal, counselor, it's still.
And I misspoke. The student wanted, the students wanted it to be handled on the school level without the notification going to their parents. So they were expressing that they weren't even initiating that process because they either didn't want their parents to know or they felt like they knew what their parents would say. And so the students were wanting it to be handled on the school level. So.
Chair. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm hearing OGC behind me, kind of making noises. Let's bring OGC in. Always.
I just, to the chair and Board Member Joyce, I just wanted to clarify. So, you know, we're talking the parental notification, that's in Florida statute one thousand and one point four two subsection A eight C. And that only requires a procedure for notifying a student's parent if there's a change in student services or monitoring. So the Florida statutes do not require any consent from the parents. And I think what we're hearing is that we are getting lots of responses from the parents. And so at that point, we have notified the parents. And I think the onus then goes to the parent to take the initiative to do something if they don't want the, whatever the change in student services is going to be.
Other questions?
This is really more clarifying because I think that part of the concern and even a direct result of the, of the legislation on some levels is that fluidity in pronouns. Where there was this view that students could at will, at their respective school, adjust their pronoun as they desire without parents knowing that that was taking place. And I know from the meetings I have attended and principals I've spoken with in my district that, to your point, there is, once the desire has been expressed by the student for a change in pronoun and name, that has initiated schools, respective schools, at least within my district, then to notify the parent. And that is what we are doing right now. Because before that was, it's my understanding that that was taking place without parents being aware. And that sometimes, I mean, it might be, I don't wanna say an every other day thing, but it gave students the option to explore, if you will, a, a pronoun at will. And that's the perception that I understand and that I have heard and the concern, I think, that that was expressed. But just to, to clarify, that sort of fluidity in pronoun option, it does not exist. But if a student expresses a desire, then that automatically indicates the parent will receive notification of that request.
That's correct.
And then the parent can respond and address that with their family.
Correct. And the parent can at that point in time say, I don't want that change to occur. And then it would be reversed. That's what we saw this summer with a couple of parents. Changes that have been made before the notification process was in place, but the parent found out about the change. Parent contacted the school and the school changed the, reversed the, you know, the change of the statement.
All right. And, and again, we can come back with more questions. We'll go ahead and move forward in the presentation.
I have a question on this section.
Okay, okay.
A couple, a couple of thoughts on this. One is, there's, there's a section in here on, where is it, terminology? It is only, it doesn't have, it only has like two definitions. I mean, we at least explored at least three, five, seven different terms that I'm sure folks would want to know the definition of. So I would be intrigued to increase that section a bit. It's got gender expression, I think gender identity and sexual orientation, there's no gender neutral, transgender. Like there's a lot of terms I think that folks, we need to calibrate and get clear on. And then the other section, the guidelines for transgender students, the first couple of sentences in that read, I don't think they land well. And maybe it's just me, but when you, the first sentence is their name is concerning transgender youth in schools is complicated. For me, it just, it doesn't land, it lands like, you're, you're, you're complicated. So I'm just wondering about the language in those first couple of sentences. And it sounds like competing interests. So anytime, I just think that there's some language there that I'm, I'm more concerned about. So those are my two thoughts or comments to the, to the chair.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go to, I see Mr. McDuffin make notes, mental health.
Good morning, Board. I'm Katrina Taylor, Director of School Behavior Health. And I'm going to go over the crisis and bullying portion of, excuse me, crisis and mental health portion of this presentation. With the referral process, here in Duval County, we've had a infrastructure with the Kids Hope Alliance, United Way of Northeast Florida and DCPS, to where we have a pretty robust mental health infrastructure. When Senate Bill seventy twenty-six, seventy thirty came into place, that infrastructure was built upon. And so we moved from providing mental health services to eighty of our schools in a twenty eighteen, nineteen school year to all one hundred and sixty of our comprehensive schools due to the funding that was allocated through the state. So our referral process has been in place since the nineties. We've just expanded that infrastructure due to the funding by the state. With that, if a student is referred for mental health services or there's a mental health concern, the student is assessed for mental health services within fifteen days of the referral. We have it in fifteen days. Of course, we make sure that we assess them sooner than that. However, the state does allow us fifteen days to assess the student. From there, this initiation of services must take place within fifteen days of the assessment. And we all know that parental consent is required for mental health supports to our students. So that is a requirement. If parent declines services, then we have to adhere to that, that decline of services. There's a full continuum of care that takes place for a student who has a mental health concern after parental consent. They receive intensive, either trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy or cognitive behavioral therapy, group therapy, depending on their level of care through the mental health clinicians that we have through that partnership with Kids Hope Alliance and United Way of Northeast Florida. Where crisis is, is a little different. For our students who threaten to harm themselves or attempt to do so, our schools have access to a twenty-four hour crisis hotline. That is manned by school psychologist Heather Lawson, and she takes those calls. There have been some changes to policy as relates to crisis because of House Bill five ninety that took place in the spring of last school year. And most recently, we received a TA from the state over the summer. So we know exactly how to proceed with that particular house bill. With this, if a student threatens to harm themselves, there's a process that takes place. And you all have that process in your guide there, the flow chart, so to speak, because it is very complex due to the language that came about from that particular house bill. So if a student threatens to harm themselves or attempt to do so, we must implement evidence-based de-escalation strategies for that student. From there, if they see the student continues to escalate, we are to notify the parent of the situation that is taking place, not seek parent permission. It is notification to let them know that a, their student threatened to harm themselves or attempted to do so. We also conduct the Columbia Suicide Risk and Severity Scale, which is an evidence-based screening tool. And from there, based on the results of that severity scale, the student is considered to be low risk, moderate risk, or high risk. From there, if the student is considered to be moderate to high risk, at that point, we contact, schools know to contact our crisis hotline. And we have a MOU with Child Guidance Rapid Response Team for them to go out to the school to assess the students for a BAC rat. If it is deemed that the student does meet criteria for a BAC rat, they are transported to the closest BAC rat receiving facility by law enforcement. If the student or when the student upon a student returning to school, there is a safety plan that takes place with the student and the mental health professional to ensure the child is safer now. Okay? The student generally just checks in, make sure that student is connected to appropriate services as relates to their overall mental wellbeing. So we can try to prevent the student from attempting or attempting to take their lives. So that's all that I have as it relates to crisis and mental health. And if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
My only is a technical, no questions on content. And thank you for the good work in those really fragile, hard situations. You all are impressive. But on the flow chart, quite honestly, if we're putting it out for public, and it may just be the way it printed in board docs, but there are no spaces between many of the words. I went a little cross-eyed. If this is going out to the public for public consumption, can we make it a little bit more legible? Just literally, there are no spaces between some of the words. And again, it may be the way it printed for us. It may be fine, everybody else sees it, but I got cross-eyed trying to read it and so.
To the chair, to the chair, we will, we will make sure.
And again, good information and appreciated the way I just had to like, what is that word? I've never seen that word. It was just like three words were all together with no spaces. Board Member Hershey.
Chair, I'm curious what our ratios are now as far as caseloads for guidance counselors going to schools? Because I'm hearing it's still large. And where you have some guidance counselors who have a responsibility for hundreds of, of students and like five hundred or more students? And I'm just wondering how effective that is of how you get to a student? And then I, because it sounds like you've got a large caseload and then you're referring out from there. Is that correct? So help me understand how effective we're being with those really large caseloads.
To the chair, to Board Member Hershey. In, in our school district, there's a MTSS framework as relates to mental health supports. So we have school counselors, you said guidance, but school counselors. And those are the ones that we have, at least one school counselor in every level, every elementary, two in every middle, and at least three in every high school. Of course, we have quite a few vacancies this year, but that's as relates to the school counselors. And then we have our school social workers, where the ratio is roughly about one to four. So for every one school social worker, they have four schools. And then school psychologists, they have about four, I'm looking at Amy because that's her real house, four or five schools each. And then we have the full-service school therapists, where they have, our high schools have a dedicated therapist. So they're there every day. Our middle school, there are some that have dedicated schools and some have a one to two. That means the therapist shared between two schools and our elementary is the same. Some have two schools and some have one. Our school counselors, when they're speaking with, when they're with our students, they are not touching, so to speak, every single child. So we are not at, let me go back a little bit. We are not in alignment with national standards, with ASCA. So that's the Maryland School Counselor Association as relates to our school counselors. We're trying to get there. Like we mentioned earlier, I heard about Sanderwood. I wanna say they roughly have about four or five school counselors and it's still out of, out of ratio. The ASCA standards requires there to be, I believe, one to three fifty or two fifty per student. And we got a grant this year to try to improve the ratios as relates to our overall student support systems framework. We're not where we want to be, but I think we're moving in the right direction with the need to try to increase or decrease those ratios moving forward. But there are, all of our schools have access to all of those resources as relates. So if the school counselor isn't able to meet the need, and of course, school counselors can provide brief solution-focused counseling to students, and that's generally short-term. And so school counselors aren't there to provide long-term. And so if they see that there's a need that they cannot fix, so to speak, outside of two or three sessions with the students, then they can refer out to their school count, school social workers, school psychologists, or their full-service school therapists.
Another question. Board Member Jones.
To the Chair, to the Chair, to the Chair, thank you for your work. You, you're a rock star in this area, for as I'm concerned. When parents refuse to give permission, is there an additional contact effort made to convince the parent that their child needs the support?
To the chair, to Board Member Jones, yes. So generally what happens, we notify the referral source, which is generally the school counselor that refers a child for services. And we let them know this parent has declined. There's any way you can advocate on behalf of the student. And then we strongly encourage them to meet with that student, kind of do a check-in with them. I mean, the one thing we lean upon, and even with this, with youth mental health first aid training, we try to instruct the teachers that go through the training to try to help the students to, if they, parents decline services, what other support services are available? So the student being involved in a club, being involved in a sport, journaling, you know, mindfulness. So those other support services, we try to equip those that are the referral source to kind of help those students with those things. Because the truth of the matter nationally, less than a quarter of parents consent. And Duval County, our ratio, we're about fifty-eight percent of parental consent, which is higher than the national average. However, there are still parents that decline services. So that's why it's very important for us to equip students with those resources. And we do that through making sure that school counselor that's at the school is equipped to provide those students with those other support services and continue to advocate to ensure that student is connected to those services. If not individual, then maybe group. So school counselors, like I said, do brief solution-focused counseling. So maybe you can come in with me with a group of students for twelve weeks or six weeks or eight weeks.
You can do that without parental support.
You still need parental consent. But when they, I'm sorry. But it's taking place to where you have your school council, which the parents are more open to doing that. And so as opposed to an external care provider that they may not be as open with.
I know teachers have complained about that because they've made referrals and parents won't consent. My child, this wrong, my child. And that's very frustrating for teachers, especially when you have a troubled child. Thank you.
Board Member Willie here.
You, you mentioned, I think, House Bill five ninety? And it's always interesting to see from the, the bill coming out to like the implementation of it. So I'm wondering if this is how it's helping our process or if it's, if there's tweaks or gaps there? Because of course, our Duval delegation will ask, hey, this happened, is it helping the process? Is there, there bumps in it? I'm just trying to figure that out because I know it's a little bit different with some of the notification pieces that are there.
Yes, to the board, to Board Member Willie, yes. It has been a work in process, in, in process since the spring because they pushed it out originally with no TA. And so we had to kind of figure it out a little bit. They just told us that we needed to have a designated in every single school that's gonna be responsible for putting it into the DOE's database. And so from there, and we had an infrastructure, we have an infrastructure where we have a dedicated person that could definitely put it in for our school district, but we were declined to utilize that person. Because we wanted it to be very clean, we didn't want a lot of hands in the pot. And so with having that, we're having to go and provide TA to the school weekly, sometimes daily. Because the information that's put in, it's not enough information, it's incomplete. So it has literally been a work in, in process with this particular house bill because we don't wanna open a district up to any litigation. And so if they are not de-escalating, or if it's not a mental health professional that initiates a BAC rat, or if it's not a law enforcement that have gone through the proper, the training, that opens us up. And so we're having to go back and communicate with the school if they put an incorrect person in or if they may miss a step. Fortunately, we have a pretty, a very good psychologist that we're losing this year, that's retiring, that's been responsible for doing that. And she's very, very detail-oriented. So we've been able to catch the little things that schools aren't putting in. But to answer your question, it has been a work in progress. And it's been, we're trying to make sure that we don't open ourselves up to litigation with missing those, those things.
And that's, to the chair, that's where I was going. I know that as bills get implemented, they're gonna then come back around and say, let me open the books and figure out what you've done. So I think it's important for us to understand the process and understand the staffing, staffing time that goes into it. Because some of this wasn't like, we're gonna give you an extra person. It was like, this is an additional layer of administrative pieces that you now have. So just something for us to think about as, as this comes forward. Thank you.
Well, go ahead. I think that's on both, we're moved to, okay.
I wanna piggyback on something that Board Member Jen said. When we talk about parents that are declining services for their student. In that piece, obviously, working in a middle school, you know, I can see that frustration. But can you explain to the board, is this, are these services that are just within the school? Or are they declining services that maybe are outside of the school situation? That maybe they don't want to take time out, you know, they can't, they don't have transportation? Or they just don't wanna go. Or they just don't want to go to a third party to provide those services? So what is the ratio?
So through the chair, to Board Member Joyce, these are services that are in the school. The parent does not have to pay, the parent does not have to transport. We literally have a mental health therapist in the walls of the school. All the student has to do is walk down the hall to access those services. So we initially provide them with full service and we do provide them with the list of all of our mental health providers in the community. Because some parent may have stigma as relates to their child accessing the services within the walls of the school. So maybe they want to transport their child, pay a copay, you know, externally to a mental health service provider. Um, so I'm talking specifically about those services that are accessible in the walls of our school that they're declining.
Thank you for that clarification because I know that there were services that were declined because it was a third party. So that, and we've blacked it, that, that that's changed.
Um, we will, uh, as always, thank you for your positive energy and all of your good work. I will let, um, Board Member Jones send us about that and we'll move to E S E. Thank you.
So good morning. I'm Amy Valentine. I'm the Executive Director of Exceptional Student Education and I'm going to share with you the E S E information this morning. Um, if a student is suspected of having a disability, they might be suspected by their parent, could be suspected by the school. Um, then a multidisciplinary referral team meeting is scheduled. Um, the team would consist of the parent, the school, um, a school psychologist, maybe a speech and language pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist. Depending on what, what the areas of concern would be. So the meeting would be scheduled, they discuss the students, you know, how the student's performing, what any concerns might be. And then the team may recommend evaluations. They might say, well, we really need to get an idea of the student's cognitive functioning. To understand if they're working up to their abilities. We might need to do an occupational therapy assessment or a physical therapy assessment. In order to do any of those evaluations, um, we are required to get parental consent, sign parental consent, um, to proceed. So a parent must first give their consent. From the date that we receive the signed consent back. Um, the team has sixty days to complete those evaluations, whatever may have been requested. Um, following that sixty-day period, or as soon as the evaluations are completed, the team would come back together again with the parent. With the same t- team members that were present in the first meeting and they would review those evaluations. Um, at that point, they look at state eligibility requirements to determine based on those evaluations. Does the student meet eligibility for any of our exceptional student educational exceptionalities like autism? Um, emotional behavioral disabilities or other health impaired? If a child does, then they would place them in that E S E program only with parental consent. Then they would develop an I E P to support the student and the parent, and that, all of that requires parental consent. So fortunately, um, you know, parental involvement, parental participation is heavily embedded in I D E A. So nothing has really changed with any of the new legislation. Um, parents have to sign consent for just about everything.
So, any questions on this piece? Vice Chair Pearson.
I'm, I'm hearing from some teachers who have students that they feel very strongly probably need. Be evaluated or need some kind of additional services. And they're having a hard time getting the parents to sign off. Um, what supports are we offering to teachers who may have students? In their classrooms who probably everyone agrees need some extra services. Um, but, but the parents won't sign off and so they're continuing to be in the classroom. I'm, I am hearing that that is a taxing situation for teachers. What are, what support are we offering to teachers who are in that situation?
To the, to the Chair, to Board Member Pearson. Yes, unfortunately, that, that does happen frequently. Um, you know, certainly we try to reach out to parents. We try to educate them. You know, being found eligible for E S E is in a sentence. Parents can opt in basically, if, if the child's eligible. And then later, if they decide that they don't want any part of it, they can opt out. We try to explain that once a student moves outside of public education, there's no stigma. They're not, you know, we don't send anything saying this is an E S E student. Um, what, if students attend a, a university or a, a community college, they have to self, you know, they have to go and seek services themselves. Um, so we try and talk parents through that. We try and talk them through all the benefits that, you know, students can receive just the services alone. Then a lot of the federal protections that are embedded within I D E A for those students. Um, we can't force parents to opt in. So if a parent refuses services, and that, that does happen sometimes, and sometimes, you know, it just takes them a little bit of time and then they will agree to it. Um, you know, we can only continue, you know, if they're not technically E S E students. So we can work with the schools to try and make recommendations. You know, if we can provide any kind of supports, we do, but they would not be covered under that E S E eligibility. Also, you know, in order to be found eligible for E S E, in most cases, it requires that the teams have gone through M T S S. And that's not working. So we first tried those multi-system tiers of support. Um, and so we would continue that. We can work with those M T S S teams to beef those plans up. Or, or try to incorporate a little bit more without providing direct services, which a parent is, is not wanting.
Are you good?
I have a quick question.
Board Member Willie.
So it, um, on page eighteen to thirty-two in the handbook, it says one, two, three, four, and it says within thirty days. Um, one, two, three, the above, you'll sort of get, uh, notification. But then there's a different sort of process if a parent does it, right? So and it's like thirty days. So then if the parent initiates it and then it says, within thirty days, does then it come back to the original? Where then the thirty-day clock starts for the, uh, the response?
Yes, to the Chair, to Board Member Willie, there, there are a lot of regulations. So any kind, anytime we have a meeting with a parent, we're required to give seven to ten days notice. Um, if a parent does suspect that a student has a disability, we're required to hold a meeting. Not necessarily ask for evaluations, but at least consider that parent's request within thirty days.
Got it. And are you getting a lot of those? Is that like, roughly how many does your office get of like that parental notification? I want my student to be evaluated. Through the chair, I'm sorry.
It, it comes from, from so many different places. Um, we don't always distinguish whether they're parent requests or not. Our office doesn't always get that information. Um, because sometimes it's a teacher at a school saying, I've been working with the student, we've been doing M T S S, nothing's working. So we really want to get the student on the next agenda. Sometimes it's a parent request. I personally probably get one of those a week that just ends up in my lap. Um, because parents look on the website and email me, but from a district perspective, we don't collect the parental requests. Versus the school requests separately.
Got it. But is that, is it a different process? But, but isn't that a different timeline and process that the school does versus parent does it?
We're hold, we're held more accountable to that thirty days when a parent requests it. We do try to honor that when a school requests it, but sometimes, like I mentioned before, M T S S is something, you know. We, with, when a parent requests it, we automatically within thirty days, whether the team's gone through M T S S or not, we hold a meeting to say. How we started this process, do we need to start it? Um, if a school requests it, we try to meet with the school and say, okay, tell us where you are in M T S S, how we started that procedure. Because that would be a prerequisite to moving forward. So it is a little bit different. Um, but we try to prioritize those, especially if we know that the school's been working with the student and following those processes and nothing's working.
Um, I do have another question. Uh, well, and first, um, love the way this is laid out. I was not an expert in your area and this was the first time I saw like a condensed version. I was like, oh, okay. Um, but mine actually, uh, relates to the gifted piece, students who are suspected of being gifted. And we always know nominated for screening by teacher, by parent, by school leadership, whatever. But, uh, second grade screener was something that we, uh, Ms. Renfro led, um, that effort a number of years ago. Um, and so just checking to see where the status is on that, if we're still doing it, if we're not, and if we are, can we make sure we put that in here? Um, and can you speak to the fact that we changed that instrument during that time to identify a more diverse gifted student population? And some of the successes that you saw when you implemented.
To the Chair. Yes, we do, we write, um, schools just submitted their documents for the second grade sweeps. And we also, for our K-two schools, we do first grade sweeps. We also have our team of two has worked with our middle schools to conduct sixth grade sweeps for our middle schools. So we've done a lot in terms of identifying children and we have changed our assessment. So that it, um, it really has captured more students, um, in that screening process. So that's been a lot of success, I see, that we're identifying more students.
So can we, where it says the gifted piece, can we say that that nomination occurs? But can we also just put a sentence in there that is, uh, clear that all students? Because I want to, I mean, this is going out for parent consumption. I want to make sure that all parents in our district know that every single child in the second grade, again, those K through two schools. Uh, that every child's being looked at and screened, that, that we don't just leave it up to a teacher to think a child's well behaved and great. And so they're going to get screened that every child, you know, and, and again, that we use a screener that is, um. Representative of our, of our district. So anyway, if we can add that sentence there, because I think that's good way, just for an F Y I, that was something this board prior to many of us being on it. I believe you two were the only ones who were on it at the time. Um, y'all leaned heavily into that and wanted every child to have, um, opportunity. Um, do you remember? Yeah. And so that was something that Ms. Renfro and her fierce team of two, um, did and did really well. So I just want to make sure parents know that that happens. Any other questions? All right, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Green to do any closing, any other additional thoughts that we need to be aware of.
To the Chair, I just wanted to state that the reason we changed this to a more comprehensive student support guide. Was under the, the law of parent notification, it wasn't just related to L G B T Q students. It was related to a number of things that we do in the district. And so this guide kind of coalesces all of those into one location. And some of the forms can be used for different issues, such as the safety, um, support. That, that can be used for bullying, it could be used for other things than, than just, um, what it was being used for prior to creating this comprehensive student support guide.
Thank you. Um, uh, thank you to everyone who presented today. I will say this was an incredibly informative day. And thank you for letting us, um, get a better understanding of the areas of your work. Um, we are appreciative. I do think there were some bring-backs, so we'll look forward to seeing those as well. I know Ms. Thompson is always over there making sure that those are recorded. Um, at this point, um, I do want to remind, uh, those on the board meeting, on the board. That we do have a, uh, a special board meeting to include litigation shade meeting following this meeting. Um, I'm going to go ahead and do a ten-minute though. We'll adjourn this meeting, take about, are y'all good with ten minutes and keep moving? Okay, um, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, uh, this meeting at this time. So I have a, a motion by Board Member Cardy and a second by Board Member Willie. All those in favor, signal by saying yay. Any opposed? That motion carries at seven to zero and we are adjourned until three till twelve. I was a middle school principal. We had three-minute change of classes. I can do the odd, the odd. Middle schoolers do not need extra time in the hallway.